To Lilith, please.
Yeah.
You have the volume.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, uh, I'm just gonna like count to ten. I'm gonna count to ten here. You say when you're good with that volume. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
That's it.
Yeah? Good?
Thank you.
You're all set. Have a good meeting.
Okay, thank you. And now welcome to the City of Plating Board on Thursday, January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three agenda. We are in the select board hearing room at Town Hall. And I'm required by, I don't know what kind of clause I want to read this. The City of Plating Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact politely even when yours disagrees. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel loved and respected. We ask our community members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. This meeting is being recorded and streamed live on Facebook and on TV tomorrow. I'll be able to most of your agenda in just a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First is six thirty. A continued public hearing for special permanent accessory dwelling, five fifty-six First Parish Road.
I move to accept the applicant's request to withdraw the application to the accessory dwelling special permit at five fifty-six First Parish Road due to the untimely assembly and seventy thousand of the applicant's father.
Good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna write along. Public here, special permanent accessory dwelling, like eighteen Hatchet Rock Road. Uh, Ms. Jack Mosey, would you like to come up to the table and introduce yourself?
And I, I want to read this.
Okay, well, all right.
I mean, yeah, yeah. Okay. Slow down. In accordance with Master General laws, chapter forty-eight, section nine and eleven, and the City of Zoning Bylaw, section five thirty, accessory dwelling special permit, and section nine forty referrals, the planning board will conduct a public hearing at six thirty PM on Thursday, January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three in the select board hearing room. Excuse me. Town Hall, six hundred Chief Justice Bushin Highway. The subject of the hearing is an application submitted by applicant owners Elizabeth and Donald Giacomozi for an accessory dwelling special permit for an accessory dwelling to be built in an attached structure of, to pack garage to a single-family dwelling at property located at eighteen Hatchet Rock Road, City of. Property as shown on the assessors map, parcel twenty-six dash two dash forty. Plans are available for review in the Plating Office, Town Hall, others, et cetera, et cetera. According to invited to the public hearing.
So I would like to publicly declare that I've known Liz for almost fifteen years, but this will not, uh, impede my decision to make a fair ruling.
And I have known Liz for over thirty years. And this will not impede my decision either.
Okay. So if you're willing, Ms. Jack Mosey, girls, what do you want to do?
Hi.
I'm Ms. Jack Mosey, and I am looking to...
Well, you have to talk into the microphone.
Just move it over.
Just pull it over to you.
Okay.
Just tell us where you are, and we give it.
Okay. I'm Ms. Jack Mosey. I live at eighteen Hatchet Rock Road, and I'm interested in adding the accessory dwelling. So I may have a legal in-law suite above my garage, which is an existing, um, suite already. It lacks a kitchen, and so we'd like to add that on. It has the required two acres, and, um, that's the only thing that really is lacking to become a legal in-law suite. But I wanted to make sure that I did it, you know, legally to make sure that all the, uh, we can be assured for having, you know, people that stay up there or whatever and have, uh, you know, the ability to, as we age, have other options, um, in terms of living in our home for many more years than we might otherwise be able to do.
Karen? Um, I think the accessory dwelling meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw. Um, and, you know, as we go through the motion, we'll make some few changes as we go. The accessory dwelling is thirty percent of the primary dwelling, so it meets the size requirement. It's within a single structure, so I think it meets that requirement. Uh, so I think, I think the board should approve the, um, accessory dwelling.
Any comment from anybody in the board? And this is a public hearing, so anything from the public?
I, I do have a few questions.
Could you please stand up and identify yourself?
On Lou Doggley, twenty-seven Hatchet Rock Road. Um, my questions are, was this room originally a four, as I've been told by the clerk? It was originally a four-bedroom, and you're not adding any additional bedrooms so that the septic system can accommodate this, this new apartment?
Um, we're making accommodations because one of our, uh, so we had, have, uh, an architect draw up the plan, and one of our bedrooms, which we use as a mattress, will have to be modified to make sure that that meets the required...
Of your septic system.
Yes, so we'll still be a four-bedroom house. We'll obviously be a four-bedroom house, and, uh, we'll never be able to...
Okay, but it's note that the apartment isn't part of the house. The house is a four-bedroom, so this is basically like a fifth bedroom, but you're saying you're gonna take away a bedroom in the main house?
Yes, we use one of them as an office, and there will be modifications that have to be made to that so that it is legally a... We have that all drawn up in our, in our plans, um, to, um, we can't have a clause in there. There's certain modifications that the architect drew up to make.
The doorway has to be monitored.
Yeah.
The, the Board of Health has, uh, sent in a comment, as long as the bedroom count remains at four, Board of Health has no comment. So they have to remain at a four-bedroom house.
Goodbye.
Yes, during the primary, what it means, yes, correct.
Um, I also see that in the standard conditions that you have to have at least two parking spaces for this apartment. Um, my question is, there does not seem to be anything that's addressing the number of people that are gonna be committed in this unit. From my understanding, again, from the clerk, when I was in asking, it was, you're primarily making this for possibly a caregiver or family members?
Yeah.
And for possibly using this as a...
I might end up living, you know, someday myself if my children choose to take over the house or whatever.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
The conversations need to be directed to the chair.
Okay.
And then the responses through the chair.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So, yes, that's, you know, the plan is to, you know, make it accessible so that down the road, given certain circumstances, if one of my kids wanted to take over the house, whatever, we can also, you know, utilize that space.
When we go to our conditions, we address the parking, we address the custody order.
But it doesn't seem like anything was addressed on the number of people that are gonna be committed in this unit.
We don't have control over that.
Okay, so if I'm understanding, it's one big open room, was now gonna have a kitchen area that has a bathroom, how many people could possibly live there with only two parking spots?
That's, that's not our, that's not our concern. We will address that with parking, which is the thing that we can control.
Okay.
I mean, we could have a little rich house, if somebody gets seven kids living in there, we can't say anything about that. That's beyond our control. I'm just getting concerned about that.
And then my only other concern is because of Airbnb, is there a possibility that if it's not rented to a caregiver or a family owner that it's going to go out to the general public in something like an Airbnb?
Do you want to address that?
It, our accessory dwellings in situ it can be rented.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we can't, we, at this point, we have nothing in our bylaw to prevent, to prevent them from being rented. I mean, that's not the purpose of a primary dwelling, and it shouldn't be used for that, but the, the primary, it could be rented. Either the primary dwelling or the accessory dwelling, the owner has to live on-site in either unit.
So while I know in one of our internal conversations has to do with Airbnb's, it, as a town, we have not addressed that. Um, but that is a care, and I have discussed this, uh, about how that question matters at the state level. So when that comes up, we will address that hopefully in a manner that's acceptable. Anything else?
I just have, um, I noticed a, a letter from an author that we couldn't make it, that she asked me to bring it. So I will give it to...
Would you agree to parking your show down there?
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry.
Um, this is from Kathy Downing, um, five seventy-seven Country Ray. As I am unable to attend the public hearing today, November twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three. Regarding the above referenced property, I write in voice my, my opinion. My property is going behind and adjacent to eighteen Hatchet Rock Road. I am opposed to the petition by Donald and Elizabeth Giacomozi to turn the in-law apartment above the garage into a separate extension, single-family dwelling. The neighborhood that this house is in consists solely of single-family dwellings. It is a family neighborhood with many young children. Turning this property into a session, essentially a two-family dwelling is not in keeping with the spirit of this neighborhood where most families have raised, resided for many years, for many, many decades. Our rental apartment is not consistent with this neighborhood. I am asking that this permit be denied. Thank you for your time.
Okay, you, uh, we are approving accessory dwelling, but not approving of a second house as well, but that I heard you to do. And it reads all the bylaw and reads all the standards. So unless there's any objection from anybody in the board?
You know, one of the things that we have to keep in mind, I have an accessory department process through for me, and there are a few others in, I live off the border of Spur. It doesn't really affect anything. It really truly does not. Maybe when the whole, the, the accessory dwelling person pops on the street, and I'm gonna say no. Thing is, it can be an asset to the neighborhood. Let us not look at it as detrimental.
Do you have a motion?
Is it...
I move to make the following findings of fact on November thirtieth. Applicants, thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, applicant Elizabeth and Donald Giacomozi apply for special permit for accessory dwelling in a single-family home at the property at eighteen Hatchet Rock Road. According to the town, uh, city of accessory records, and the deed, the property at eighteen Hatchet Rock Road is owned by Donald and Elizabeth Giacomozi. Based on the floor plan submitted with the application, the planning board finds the floor area of the accessory dwelling to be seven hundred forty-five net square feet. The floor area of the primary dwelling is three thousand twenty-five square feet according to the assessors records. The application indicates the floor area of the primary dwelling to be two thousand four hundred thirty-four square feet. The accessory dwelling is twenty-five percent...
Just say it's thirty percent. Just, just shorten to say the accessory dwelling is thirty percent of the floor area of the primary dwelling.
All right. This meets the size requirements of five thirty point two F of the zoning bylaw for accessory dwellings as the bylaw allows seven hundred fifty square feet or forty percent of the total floor area of the primary dwelling, whichever is greater. The accessory dwelling is subordinate to the existing single-family home. Four, the accessory dwelling unit will be a complete separate housing unit, and there will be only one accessory dwelling on the lot. Five, the property is in the residential art-toed zoning district. The portion, uh, is in the water resource protection district. The proposed accessory dwelling structure meets all required setbacks, building height, and yard requirements for primary dwelling. Six, the proposed accessory dwelling is to be located in a finished second-floor of a single-family home. Access will be via, via a door on the side of the house and stairway connected to the first floor of the existing dwelling. Seven, the appearance of the accessory dwelling will be in keeping with the appearance of the primary dwelling. Eight, an as-built disposal system planned for eighteen Hatchet Rock Road dated June sixth, two thousand two, by EET Inc., shows a two-story garage and driveway. This appears adequate to provide two parking spaces for the pri- primary dwelling and two parking spaces for the accessory dwelling. Ample parking appears to be provided. Nine, the applicant has submitted a signed, notarized statement that she will continue to reside on the property in either the primary, public, or accessory dwelling. An accessory dwelling will ser- will be serviced by Town Water and an existing septic system. The applicant meets the standards of the city of zoning bylaw for an accessory dwelling special permit.
Is there, um, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Question?
Yeah, we wanna make some corrections in that.
All right.
Got me doing, Steve?
Yeah, if you were not...
Um, number three, um, the, the last sentence, we wanna change the wording to say the accessory dwelling is contained within an existing single-family home, does not expand the footprint of the existing home, is not separately discernible from the existing house, and is therefore clearly subordinate to the existing single-family home.
And I would say that those were my edits, and I just felt like we need to have sort of a basis for why we found it, um, it was subordinate.
Okay. Number seven, want to change the wording to number seven. The appearance of the accessory dwelling will not materialize alter the appearance of the primary dwelling since the new stairway for the access will be at the side of the primary dwelling and therefore is in keeping with the appearance of the primary dwelling. Number eight, uh, the second sentence, change it to say this is adequate to provide two parking spaces for the primary dwelling to the accessory. Ample parking for the accessory dwelling will be provided.
Seven, as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the special permit for accessory dwelling at eighteen Hatchet Rock Road with the following conditions. In addition to the standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the planning board after public hearing on twelve seventeen fifteen, and on the condition that all representations made by the applicant owner as set forth in the plans of that are performed. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall be substantially performed to plans submitted with the application by Rockwood Design Inc. with accessory dwelling marked in, undated, consisting of first-floor plan, second-floor plan, eighteen Hatchet Rock Road, as-built disposal system, eighteen Hatchet Rock Road, City of Mass, by EET Inc., dated June sixth, twenty, two thousand two. Two, the number of bedrooms in the accessory dwelling is limited to one in the location and size indicated on the floor plan submitted with the application. Three, no further expansion of the accessory dwelling floor area is allowed without further review by the planning board. Four, upon occupancy of the accessory dwelling, the applicant shall provide a notarized affidavit that an owner is living in one of the dwelling units. Ideally certification that the owner occupies one of the dwelling units must be provided by March first yearly. By all requirements of the Board of Health, Building Department, zoning Board of Appeals, Department of Public Works, fire department, and other town agencies must be met prior to occupancy of the accessory dwelling. Six, the accessory dwelling shall conform to all applicable standards in the building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire, and health codes and bylaws. Seven, any lighting installed shall be downlighting, do not shed light on the lighting properties. Eight, construction work shall not begin prior to seven AM weekdays and eight AM on Saturdays, and shall cease no later than seven PM or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal, state, and federal holidays. Construction includes idling of vehicles, delivery of materials to the site, and all other construction activities. Erosion, nine, erosion, sedimentation control devices shall be installed if necessary to prevent any erosion or sedimentation from leaving the site or construction. Silk saw shall be used as necessary. And the appearance of the accessory dwelling will be in keeping with the primary dwelling unless otherwise required by Massachusetts Building Code. And new exterior stairs needed to comply with primary or secondary means of ingress for the accessory dwelling shall be located on the side or rear of building. Eleven, these two private off-street parking spaces shall be available for use by occupants of the accessory dwelling in addition to those parking spaces required for the primary dwelling.
Second.
Second.
I have a couple corrections.
Yep.
Um, the first, in the first area, um, you know, after the planning board public hearing on twelve seventeen fifty, uh, the new layers that I added, they're on the condition that all representations made by the applicant owner as set forth in the findings of fact are implemented. I have another change to number four. The, um, the second sentence, a yearly certification that the owner occupies one of the dwelling units must be provided to the planning office by March first yearly. I think that clarifies it a little bit better, um, so.
And just one other, headed on number ten. Just say it's located on the side of the building.
Okay, yeah. Yeah. Just cases to the side.
Yeah.
Um, a second is amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
So there's a, this will get filed with the town clerk within fourteen days, and there's a twenty-day bail period.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So at six forty-five, you know, another perfect, um, special permit for accessory dwelling for former land. Do we have a lot of...
No, Ellen, pardon your watch.
Hi, Howard. If you could just, uh, introduce yourself and tell us a little bit.
Wait a minute. Careful with the logo.
Yeah, I can, I can, we can...
It was here, and it's...
Somebody took it.
Somebody took it.
Somebody took it.
It went over. It's there, I didn't highlight it.
I don't consider, I just can't, okay, no, 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 we do.
In accordance with Master General laws, chapter forty-eight, section nine and eleven, and the City of Zoning Bylaw, section five thirty, accessory dwelling special permit, section nine forty referrals, the planning board will conduct a public hearing at six forty-five PM on Thursday, January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three in the select board's hearing room at Town Hall, six hundred Chief Justice Bushin Highway. Subject of the hearing is an application submitted by applicant Ian Hager and Ellis Carroll Palmer and Bradley Tanner for accessory dwelling special permit for accessory dwelling on the first floor of existing single-family home at property located at former land, City of. Property as shown on assessors map, block parcel thirty-nine dash twenty dash one dash B. Plans are available for review in the Plating Office. Others and other interested parties are invited, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, my name is New Miss Hager. I'm a general contractor acting on behalf of Carol Palmer and... For...
What's the first one you have?
Um, so it's already an existing, um, in-law. I guess it was never appropriately, uh, permitted for this. They have purchased ours, and the current condition it is. Um, so alls we're doing is kind of reconfiguring where everything actually sits, and they wanna make it so it's obviously legally permanent, accessory dwelling.
Well, that's nice.
Yeah.
And because actually, if, if you sell a house, which I know with an accessory dwelling, you need to apply to us to get them. I, I, you know, there are tons of law bylaws to reduce some revisions, so. Karen?
Um, so I believe what, uh, Mr. Hager said is correct. Um, they, they had applied for billing permit, and, you know, couldn't get billing permit, so they're trying to legalize the existing accessory dwelling and do some renovations, make it more suitable for their needs. So I believe that it is, uh, an approvable project.
Thank you. So, the board? Ready? Yeah, there's nobody else here.
Nobody online.
Nobody, is anybody online, Carol, I see your camera, right?
Yes.
Okay, if she wants, if she likes to make any comments.
Can you, would you like to say something?
Carol, if you'd like to make any comment, you can, um, raise your hand, camera on, so we know that you are... Or we can just...
We could just move on.
Okay.
I move to make the following findings of fact. One, on November thirty, twenty-twenty-two, applicant Ian Hager of IS Hager Building and Remodeling applied for special permit for accessory dwelling in a single-family home at the property at former land on behalf of Carol Palmer and Bradley Tanner homeowners. Two, according to the town of City of Accessories Records, D, uh, and the D, the property at former land is owned by Carol Palmer and Bradley Tanner. Both owners signed the accessory dwelling special permit application. Three, based on the floor plans submitted with the app- application, the planning board finds the floor area of the accessory dwelling to be seven hundred ninety square feet. The floor area of the primary dwelling is two thousand four hundred four square feet according to assessors records. Application indicates the floor area of the primary dwelling to be three thousand three hundred sixty square feet. The accessory dwelling is thirty-three percent of the floor area of the primary dwelling down.
Just stop there.
Okay.
Stop there.
Yep.
This meets the, do you want to just eliminate?
Yeah, just go on to either case, right?
Okay.
Oh, no, you, you don't need to say...
This meets the size requirements of five thirty point two F of the zoning bylaw for accessory dwellings as the bylaw allows seven hundred fifty square feet or forty percent of the total floor area of the primary dwelling, whichever is greater. The accessory dwelling is subordinate to an existing single-family home. Four, the accessory dwelling unit will be a complete separate housing unit, and then will be only one accessory dwelling on the lot. Um, the property is located in the art-toed zoning district. Proposed accessory dwelling structure meets all required setbacks, building height, and yard requirements for primary dwelling. Six, the proposed accessory dwelling is to be located in a first-floor remodeling of the same family home. Access will be via a door, door at the side of the house, and a door into the existing home, and a second outside access from the bedroom. Seven, the appearance of the accessory dwelling will be in keeping with the appearance of the primary dwelling. Eight, the mortgage inspection plan, block ten dash number former land in City of by Colonial Land Survey Company Inc., dated five five fourteen, shows the location of the existing primary dwelling. The accessory dwelling is proposed within the primary dwelling. No parking or driveways are shown on the plan. An air maps image on twelve twenty twenty-two shows a driveway with parking for four cars in the north, at the north end of the house. This appears adequate to provide two parking spaces for the primary dwelling and two spaces for the accessory dwelling. Ample parking appears to be provided. Nine, an owner has submitted a signed, notarized statement that she will continue to reside on the property as her full-time residence once the accessory dwelling is renovated. Ten, the accessory dwelling will be serviced by Town Water and Sewer. Eleven, the applicant meets the standards of the City of Zoning Bylaw for accessory dwelling special permit.
Is there a second?
Second.
So in favor?
No, no, same changes as the previous accessory dwelling, which is, you know, with the number three, number seven, and number eight. I'll just make those changes.
Second is amended.
Okay, bye.
Bye.
I move to approve the special permit for accessory dwelling at former land with all conditions. In addition to the standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the planning board after public hearing on twelve seventeen fifteen, and on the condition that all representations may be made by the applicant owner as set forth in the findings of fact are performed.
Beautifully.
And you're...
Are implemented. Are implemented. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall substantially conform to plans submitted with the application by HRL Architects LLC, dated eight twelve twenty twenty-two, consisting of one sheet, DSK dash B one, proposed first-floor plan, mortgage and inspection plan for lot ten dash former land in City of Mass by Colonial Land Survey Company, dated five five fourteen. Two, the number of bedrooms in the accessory dwelling is limited to one and the location and size indicated on the floor plan submitted with the application. Three, no further expansion of the accessory dwelling floor area is allowed without further review by the planning board. Four, upon occupancy of the accessory dwelling, the applicant shall provide a notarized affidavit that an owner is living in one of the dwelling units. A yearly certification that the owner occupies one of the dwelling units must be provided by March first yearly. Five, all requirements in the Board of Health, Building Department, zoning Board of Appeals, Department of Public Works, Fire Department, and other town agencies must be met prior to occupancy of the accessory dwelling. Six, the accessory dwelling shall conform to all applicable standards in the building, plumbing, and electrical, mechanical, fire, and health codes and bylaws. Then a wire connection and sewer connection... That a water connection and sewer connection must meet all requirements of the D P G L E for the accessory dwelling unit. Eight, any light, lighting installed should be downlined not to shed light on abiding properties. Nine, construction works shall not begin prior to seven AM weekdays and eight AM on Saturdays, and shall cease snow later than seven PM or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal, state, and federal holidays. Construction includes idle elevators, delivery of materials to the site, and all other construction activities. Ten, erosion and sedimentation control devices shall be installed as necessary to prevent any erosion or sedimentation from leaving the site during construction. Slips off shall be used as necessary. Eleven, the appearance of this accessory dwelling will be in keeping with the primary dwelling unless otherwise required by the Massachusetts Building Code, and new exterior stairs need to be provided by primary or secondary means of egress for the accessory dwelling shall be located on the side or the rear of the building. Twelve, at least two private off-street parking spaces shall be available for use by the occupants of the accessory dwelling in addition to those parking spaces required for the primary dwelling.
Karen, you want to add? Changes in number four and number eleven, the same as the other, one hundred and four.
Move as amended.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Bye. Thank you very much.
So you have this gets filed within fourteen days, then come again a couple periods, but you won't get your dwelling permit.
Thank you.
Over by law, um. So we have a continued public need cycling way to board one, four, three, that is going to be drawn. Do you want to read it? Uh, I can read, I move to accept the applicant's request to withdraw the cycling way to application to seven seventy, to seven eighty countryway, and the reuse of the property as a coffee shop will not change. For a second.
Second.
Okay.
Bye. Bye.
Okay. Um, you want to, um. We have a discussion about store water, the swimming pool was seven over circle. Which has.
Do you have that one?
You didn't do it.
No, that's because that's just a discussion.
Oh, all right.
That doesn't need a mo.
Okay. A Bayberry, who is that? Here we go, I move to accept Paul Maravito's request on behalf.
You know, we haven't finished the book yet.
Yes.
You don't do anything, all right. I move to accept Paul Maravito's request on behalf of the owner of A Bayberry Lane to extend the storm on appearance of A Bayberry Road. Is it Lane or Road?
Road.
Road.
Road. Okay, Road. To, uh, for one year from February twelve, twenty twenty-three to February twelve, twenty twenty-four as the house and site is still under construction.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Okay. Over by law, okay, so then we have a continued public hearing, store water permit for rural drive.
No, you can't, I was, that's seven.
That's a public here, sorry. Yeah, don't do that here.
Oh. Let me just go back to the whole, um, they were thought that, they thought they were going to be ready for a discussion to commence. They're not ready, so they'll be coming in at another meeting. I did, you said you want the same procedure as before, so I'm going to store water permit and maybe they have to operate the clients first before they come in.
Yeah, that is the rest of it.
So they should be at the next February ninth meeting.
Oh, yeah, okay, I thought they told us on public rent, and then one call when everybody was going to sort it, did they not tell us?
But we can only hope. All right. Um.
Last one, do you want to housework?
I move the, I move to the meeting minutes for January twelve, twenty twenty-three. Okay. All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Good job, Karen.
Did we spend anybody?
Yeah, in second, yes, we did. Not much, except. I know what. I move to approve the requisition of ninety-two dollars and thirty cents to Gate House Media for Laurelwood lots three through five, legal app, for one thousand two hundred dollar, one thousand twenty dollars to P and W Enterprises LLC Printing of new, new zoning by law books. For one thou- thousand forty-two. Wait a minute, that's wrong, one four two point fifty cents. Is it one hun- one thousand four?
Hundred twenty.
It's missing a zero.
It's missing, it's missing a zero, all right, four hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents to Chesney Consulting, um, for peer review services, sixty-one new Driftway. For one thousand three hundred two dollars fifty cents to Chesney Consulting for peer review services for thirty-three new Driftway. Seven McDonald Terrace. For five thousand six ninety twenty-three dollars to and thirteen cents to Tech Angel for peer review services for Laurelwood lots three, four, and five, and for one hundred ninety-three dollars and five cents to J and R Graphics for Envoys.
Okay.
All in favor?
Bye.
Do you want this one yet?
Yes.
Especially the wood, I have schedules, what do you want to do, Karen?
You got N B T A communities.
We have to, we have N B T A communities to discuss.
Okay.
All right, so in your folders, we, um, we put some paperwork in there about in about N B T A, where we are with the action plan. Um, we had hoped to leave the further with the action plan, but, um, if, that's, that's okay. Um, we are having a conversation with M A P C on Monday regarding, they ran our compliance model and, um, the testing, so we're going to be talking with them on Monday. Uh, I'm also going to be talking to another community on Monday too, who had their action plan accepted as, you know, they don't meet the requirements, but they had their action plan accepted.
Who was that?
Kingston.
Okay.
Um. And we're, I have a meeting set with the T A for Tuesday to go over the action plan, what we want to submit, because it's due Tuesday.
Okay.
Um, but.
This is the action plan?
Yes.
This is what it is, so I think we can go over it tonight, but if, if anybody would like to change any of the wording, um, I gotta tell you, you've got, you've got till ten o'clock on Monday more, look, I, that's a hard deadline, because, um, we have to, I want to have it complete, you know, for, for Jim on Tuesday, so we know where we are. And I think, I was requested to send an update to the selectmen, um, before I get filed, so, you know, I'll do that, I'll do that as well. Um, so, as you know, it's with section, it has Chapter forty-eight, um, has a new Section three A, and this is what we're trying to comply. So Situate is the name of our communities, we don't have, we're supposed to have twelve hundred and thirty-nine. Um, now, for the unit capacity, that's a dictated number from a chart that they give us. We don't have any rapid transit stations, but we do have commuter rail stations. Um. We, we have North Situate Station and Green Bush Station. Um. Don't have any stations outside our municipal boundaries that would qualify for developmental station area. Um, I'm listed as the person filling out the form. Um, and we are providing the municipal C V O as Jim Woodrow, um, et cetera. We are saying that other members of the core team developing the multifamily zoning district, we're saying municipal staff, the planning board, and M A P C. Because M A P C did help with some zoning, they're applying compliance model. You guys are all getting input, and I have staff helping me, um, all this stuff. Sorry, it's been a very big help, and Cory's been doing the G I S. So, we're trying to work together. Um, does this municipality have any established housing-related goals or strategies from municipal planning documents? Well, we have, uh, we have a current housing production plan, and we have a current master plan, and so I went through those two documents to come up with a statement of please describe relevant strategies, goals, or objectives and the work that has been done to date. Um, I basically said that we, our strategy goals are been, that we have adopted inclusionary zoning. We did new zoning for North Situate, or a farm-based village-centered neighborhood district that is transit-oriented with mixed-use and multifamily near the North Situate commuter rail station. I said the same thing for Green Bush. I said projects in Green Bush under construction i- in the permanent phase. And I say capacity building strategies for sewer and water infrastructure need to be developed to support greater density zoning with the existing limited resources. So I'm pointing out that we have existing limited resources, but, you know, and that strategies have to be developed, which are identified, that those, that is identified in your housing production plan and in the master plan.
Could I, could I make just a little edit?
Yes.
Just in there?
Yes.
Just that, that last sentence?
Mm-hmm.
Started with it, it is extremely important in order to achieve these goals that capacity building strategies for. I, I just, I think it's important to emphasize that. Nobody may read it, but.
Well, it is true.
Yeah.
Okay, y'all, this is why I wanted to review it tonight.
No, that's good.
I just, I just, um, figured that you all wanted some, you know, some, some input here. And I mean, like I said, ten o'clock Monday is my hard cutoff, so, um, is this municipality currently working on other planning for housing? I'm saying no. I mean, we always have forty Bs coming in, but, I, you know, and if we are, we have to describe them.
I don't look.
I don't know of any either.
I mean, we, we have.
We're working on projects.
We have affordable housing projects.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So you don't think those projects count?
Well, I can say that this, the three A compliance is not about affordable housing. It's just about multifamily housing.
So that's not multifamily, that's just.
I mean, that's why I said that, um, in the set, in the statement, projects in Green Bush under construction in, in permanent phase. So I, I tried to say that we're, we're still, we're actively working.
No, I know, that's what I, I feel like we're actively working, that's what I'm saying.
I guess, maybe, maybe we should say.
That's all we do.
For that, just say, you know, housing projects in Green Bush.
Right.
Right? Housing in mixed use, right?
And what if I say mixed use and multifamily projects?
Yeah. Are currently in the way, right?
So, yeah, this is how it sounds like.
Two point two would be a yes. Karen?
What?
Two point two would be a yes?
No, we're still, we're not.
No.
No. I'm, we're, we're up in the box of both.
I don't think it's a yes, I think we're not working, we're not planning any other housing. We are work, we're working on project work.
We don't know of any other housing.
We don't know of any other housing, I mean, we're working on current projects, mixed use and multifamily just in our regular work.
National land, the land of real estate business.
Right.
I think you addressed that in the box of both, that's.
Yeah.
All right, we're not doing anything here.
So, to the best of your knowledge, which of the following zoning strategies? Um, we think we have an existing zoning district that might already comply. That existing zoning districts that must be amended to comply with Section three A guidelines. So, we think both of those. And please identify, um, possible compliant zoning districts of town of the Village Center Neighborhood, Green Bush Driftway Gateway District, New Driftway Transit Village is zoned for sixteen units per acre by right, thirty by six by special permit. When we get the numbers on Monday after we talk to M A P C with the compliance model, we'll update these numbers, we think it's about twelve point seven acres. It's within half mile of the commuter rail, and it has unit capacity, we're making our final number for unit capacity. And so North Situate Otter Village, we're saying basically the same thing. Uh, we're saying it's within a half mile, fifteen acres, twenty-four. We're saying it's twenty-one point acres, capacity of four sixty-five. So that's, those are the two, those are the two districts that we think already comply, but when the compliance model, we'll get our numbers from them. Select any changes that may be necessary for the existing district to comply. Attach any supporting documents that describe this district. Um. In, in addition to the two districts that comply, we are going to be giving the maps, same maps I gave you last time. We're going to be uploading for, for this. So, what, based on, I was kind of very, very, very vague right now, um. Well, so we may have to change, we may have to change district boundaries. Um, we may have, and we may have to check, um, and we probably have to change density.
Know that after one week.
We'll know that after one week, I think. And so.
And, um, is the change, is the change they speak of strictly, so many changes?
Yes, yes, yes. So, if, if we're, if, if it's going the way we hope it's going, then we may have to change some district boundaries in the North River Neighborhood District and the New Driftway Transit Village, because you can't, they don't like parcels being in two districts, they want it all in one district. So we might have some boundary changes there. Then, if the numbers go the way we're hoping they're going, we allow twelve units by right now, and we would have to change that to fifteen units by rights.
Correct.
But we'll know that on Monday, and I can probably shoot everybody an email Monday after we have our meeting.
Good.
Um, and then we'll, then we'll provide an ask for Asia.
Yeah, so changes, I was looking for the opportunity to say once again, we need support for infrastructure.
Well, and I, I put that in another place too, so I did do that. So, and then it says, what non-housing characteristics are important for this community to consider when it's three days zoning district? I put walkability, park, parking, access and screening, site landscaping, public utilities, transit-oriented development, sustainability, open space, pedestrian environment, and street retail commercial spaces.
Those are all the buzzwords.
I think those are all the buzzwords, right? Those are, I mean, if you think back to the projects we've been working on recently, these are all the things that, non-housing related, non-building related, that what we're asking about.
So, some of the examples, do we want to include any of those, bike, biking, or?
Do we really have much biking?
Well, anytime we approve projects, we're looking for.
Bike racks?
Bike racks, yeah, bike storage.
I can, I can add bike storage.
Just since they have examples, it might be good to.
All right, we'll put bicycle storage.
No, no, don't give them any ideas. Because that, that could be next, like, oh, how about you guys putting a bike lane on New York?
Well, I'm, they, they call out bike lanes.
What's that?
They call out bike lanes, and I specifically avoided that. But I took a bicycle storage, that's the different thing. Okay, then it says your action plan timeline. Okay? And this is what, you know, uh, this, this kind of might be a little hard to read um, because of the way it just went in. Um. So, I'm saying we're, the short answer, each one, you had to give a short answer.
Page me.
Um, on page nine. It, it gets a little confusing because of the way the, the format of how it, how it printed out. Um, so, apply D H C D compliance model to test density and unit capacity. I believe I said that that's going from now until probably July or so, or February. Then I'm saying. Then I'm saying, um, town meeting to adopt, complete, wait a minute. Modify and develop zoning. Workshops, planning board hearings, town meeting to adopt compliant zoning, submit compliance applications, DHCD. And I put some timeframes in here to make it so that it could be any of the town meetings. We have three town meetings in which to do this. But you know, obviously, we're going to try for, we'll see what we have to develop. If it's a simple change, we go for an early town meeting in the fall. And if it's more complicated, well, then it might take longer, we can do it next spring. But you know, I didn't submit any real, I, I left it as generic. You know, so modify and develop zoning, that's generic. But we'll see, when I talk to Kingston, I'll see if they were generic like that too. Um, and then.
So just, just a question on that, submit compliance application, DHCD. It's, it's a really broad range. Is that because we're thinking what we're submitting could be compliant now?
Yes, I mean, it's, I mean.
Okay, just, just a question.
Right, I mean, it's just, you know, we'll see, you know, if, if it's, if it's, you know, maybe, maybe I, maybe I have to change that when you're ready.
Well, you can just leave, it's February twenty, twenty-three, and say, of course we're submitting a compliance application.
We're done. We're with compliance. Yes, of course.
All right, so then they asked, is there any other feedback you would like to share about the compliance process? And I said, the compliance model came out at the end of November and we immediately started in putting that. DHCD is unresponsive to emails on the model, because our town has sent multiple emails. Very frustrating when deadline is still a deadline. The density of the zone development is problematic for our community as strategies for water and sewer infrastructure need to be developed to support greater densities with limited existing resources. So I tried to hammer that one in again. Good job.
Yeah, I, I might actually add to that.
Okay.
Just because I want to, I want to. I might actually lead with the water thing in every single, but if I, I'd make a comment that this, this will zone for it, but none of this will happen without a beautiful six-foot concrete pipe Quincy or Wayman.
Somewhere.
Somewhere, yes, where would you want it?
I, I would say after be developed, need to be developed and supported with state resources.
Oh, my God, state federal resources?
Mm-hmm.
In order to support greater density. I think we need, we just need to keep hammering that.
So wait a minute, where do you want me to put that?
So where, where you said, sorry, I lost my page. Where you said, uh, strategies for water and sewer infrastructure need to be developed.
Yeah.
And supported with state resources in order to support greater densities within the town's, you know, limited existing resources.
Okay, yeah, my bad, yeah. So if you read it a second time and you want any changes, Monday by ten. You know, we're just trying to, you know, I tried to highlight the limited resources. Um, because water and sewer are major problems. Um, you know, and, but we do have many multifamily projects that, and mixed use projects, we have mixed use projects that are, you know, trying to be permanent right now. And, um, you know, I don't have, those water resource studies are still out, that they have not been submitted yet, but their question Sam said is doing them. So when they come back, it'll be interesting and we'll have to have some major discussions in this town.
This is quite a, never, never be tolerated.
What's that?
This is quite a, this is never be tolerated.
Would never be what?
People never tolerate to put these things out like a waiting, wait, 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 you don't want. Karen, do we know what the water treatment plan?
Do we know, they're in design.
It's still in design, okay.
And how about the sewer in North Situate?
I'm still told three to five years.
Well, that was three to five years ago.
Well, I'm.
It's a rolling.
It's a rolling, five years.
I think the asset has made some, some agreements and so things are, I think, moving a little bit. But, um, that's, I'm still told, I, I ask all the time, what's the party line, three to five years?
Well, it was three to five years.
Ten years ago.
Right, thank you.
The number is, I know we're supposed to be planning any water tower, we don't hear anything about that either.
No, I don't think that's on the table.
That's not on the table.
Karen, just a quick question about the MBTA's communities and like that, like the maps and the zoning that they, that they want us to move to. Did they, when, when we were getting like briefed about this initially, did they say like what the intellectual impetus, impetus was for it as far as like, oh, we, you know, we saw this city or we saw this like metro region and we want to kind of design our zoning after this metro region?
The whole idea is that there is a shortage of housing in the state of Massachusetts. Okay, and so this was enacted at the end of twenty twenty to try to be smart about housing, housing, you know, near transit, transit stations. Um, that's about all I know. When we, when we developed our zoning prior to this coming out, when we were, we had totally done North Situate and we were just going into public hearings on that. You know, we did, we developed the zoning that was the form-based that we thought was right for North Situate and was right for Green Bush based on the cri, based on the criteria from a consultant. This wasn't even in the picture then.
No, 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 I'm, I'm not talking about what, what Situate has done, but like when, when, uh, DHCD like first introduced the, the action plan for MBTA communities, did they say, they, how they developed their idea for what they wanted the MBTA's view, zoning, like what their history?
No, they, no, I don't think they really said that.
I think this goes way back to transient, transit oriented development, right? Which is going back to the early two thousands where it was first started. Is to, to make sure that the locations were, transit stations were that, you know, it was, it was, uh, developed in a way that our, you know, housing development, mixed use and all that. I think that's been going on for a very long time. It's maybe it, just the next generation are trying to implement the same thing. And in particular, I think it might have, uh, uh, housing crisis in Massachusetts. And just not much great housing available.
No, there's not how, there's not much great housing and there's not, I mean, affordability is an issue, but this three A is not, it's just about generating housing. And fortunately, you have that requirement already in your zoning bylaw that's going to help um, by having inclusionary zoning so that your numbers hopefully, I don't know, maybe one day they'll catch up and you know, Situate will be at ten percent.
This was, this was on the news, like on four, five, or seven the other night, it didn't get good. A kind of hand by the, by the reporters, I was surprised.
What state?
Four or five percent, I can't remember, it was just, it was on the TV and I saw it.
And I think one of the issues is that this is very generic and pushed on everybody, so not only need to cut it out. So I think you say get back these models, like I said, well, that's not going to work in here, that's not going to work in here. So we have to reapply it, I, I think that, and I know.
It is part of us, like surgery with an axe.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we, we know that Laura Hill is, is a hundred ten percent client, so she's, she stated that actually in purpose. She stated the movement or whatever, she, she, she talked about my, my point. We have housing, not affordable housing, so I don't know whether, whether we decide that that needs to be cut as well as law.
It also, our affordable housing, such as it is, as an example, down by three A.
It's expensive.
It's very expensive, one bedroom is.
Two thousand dollars?
No, it's under two thousand.
It's one thousand nine hundred and change.
It's a dollar bubble, but like I said, so it's because of where we live, so.
Three ninety-nine, wonderful.
Yeah, really, but it's just. And then, but if the, the theory is if you have more housing units, ultimately, it will be more affordable to be, that's, that's the theory.
That's that market you want or what?
Yeah, as far as you have.
Someplace to build, I sell my house, but I can't afford it.
I guess it look bad, but I'm, I'm looking at it every day, it's, it's all right.
Yeah.
They're gonna have to slow down that speed limit over there, cause the, the, the curb cut for that is like right below the invisibility line, so the guys who are, you know, just getting a full pit of steam as they're passing by candidates coming north, they're gonna run into a lot of surprises, they say.
Come down, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we should call the police fuck out there. Yeah, I know, they probably will.
Well, after they wipe out a few people off the street.
Yeah.
But then too, the issue that we have is the catchment that we're in, we're in Metro West.
Mm-hmm.
And if we, right, and if we were in, I mean, who would believe in Dover? An affordable unit in Dover is a thousand dollars.
We did almost, let's take a field trip to see.
We have to, we have to go to field trip.
So at seven thirty, we do have a public hearing, although one.
Okay.
Try to keep on track, you want me to keep on track?
Yes, I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the stormwater permit for Laurelwood Drive, Lot three, number five, Laurelwood Drive, Lot four, number seven, and Laurelwood Drive, Lot five, number nine, until February twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, at six thirty P M. And to continue the time for action and filing with the town board until March twenty-four, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
Almost there.
Hi. Hi.
I know that is the bottom right up. I, 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 I don't know many Jaxies, but I think I know who that is. Jaxekouskas, is that you?
Do you want to raise your?
It is me.
Okay, hi. So we're gonna, this is, they asked us to, what extent is here and they were not making for us. Okay?
He muted himself again.
Okay, so that's all. He's, he's, he's in the bar.
Okay.
So you just want to say we're not taking any testimony, we're not taking any testimony on this.
Tonight.
Tonight.
Well, it's, it's pretty scheduled. But we have gone to the Rocker Road which might, so we're already at Old Business, New Business, Council on District Administration. I'm just gonna update you, we've got a tough care. So Karen would.
Do you have liaise on the cards?
Um, I can do what you can do. Yeah, well, Karen and I can talk.
Oh, yeah, we went to DRC the other night and, um, for about thirty-three, New Driftway and sixty-one New Driftway. And, um, DRC wanted some, um, they wanted some more information. They wanted a diagram of how exactly the setback, step back impacts the building. They want an actual diagram of how it impacts that, which I think is very good.
This was the roof thingy?
Everything.
Everything.
Yeah, several things.
Most projects, they wanted a step back, step back. Um, they're, they're entitled to a list of materials, uh, we asked for a list of materials. Um, some other, my, some other things that they need to provide. Um, so the next DRC meeting is going to be February twenty-eighth. So they, they have a deadline to submit by February twenty-first.
To word I never heard before, diaphragmatically, please, please present to us diaphragmatically. Oh, yeah, it's, I never heard.
Yeah, and they, they had some of the same comments you did, um, that the board did, you know, they want the rendering to be realistic rendering, don't show stuff in the ren, in the artist's rendering that's not there because that just makes it look pretty when that's not what you're really getting at.
Nope.
So, um, they, sixty-one New Driftway, they had some problems with the roof line. Um, and so it's, you know, it's, it was a good meeting in terms of a dialogue back and forth. And so that's what it's supposed to be. So hopefully, the design review committee may have some recommendations for each of the projects. Um, when they come back, thirty-three comes back, I think, March ninth and sixty-one comes back, March twenty-third. So hopefully, they'll have some comments for the board for their next public hearing sessions on those projects.
So it's interesting when you hear architects speak to architects. It's, it's the same kind of conversation, but at a little higher level, cause they really don't understand. They're very focused on what they're looking at, not just like sometimes the overall. So.
It was good, it was good meetings.
It's a good meeting.
So.
And we, I don't have any other looking at public reports, are you getting happy, no? No? Karen, we have.
Same old fun, we're having our, hey! Um.
So much rain.
Oh.
I'm not sure you're gonna be getting essay of like, your forest is flooded.
Everything's flooded, yeah.
Well, I don't know, at the, this morning on the news it said, limit their one point seven inches, Boston got about an inch. So if you want to extrapolate, I don't know how much we got.
Unless you scared, should be flooded.
Yeah.
So.
You didn't like the late flooding too, like part of my basement, like had the sun pump going, it's all going in the sun pump and then that dried out and then this afternoon, just before I came here, a different part, I'm like, going out there.
Four inches.
Yeah.
Well, I, it's interesting that, you know, they closed the harbor again before move. So, you know, they closed the harbor, they closed Satanian areas, they closed Officer Central Lab, they closed Rebecca Lighthouse. Climate change in real time, and like I say, well, it happened to different times, different parts of the day, but, um, no, I think that's a huge issue for the master plan to have to tackle.
So Little Bridge got twenty-five inches since midnight. Last, last night, May last. I think Little Bridge is like the, train bridge, it's
Oh, I hear.
Side, uh, south of the, like the Green Bush Station, so there was.
Oh, okay.
Nine to one point what?
Uh, twenty. But since, since midnight.
It was heavier after midnight.
It was heavier after midnight.
Unbelievable.
After midnight. Forest was rather a boat. Do you have anything else to cover?
Um.
Do you want to?
Yes, please.
Move it to Karen.
Okay, all in favor? Bye. Wow, record.
Short.
Ever.
Thanks, Seth, we're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're off?
No, we're not off yet.
First, let's go to the.
Wait, we're just waiting for Seth to turn us off.
Awesome, first let's go three quarters of there.
We'll just.
Maybe.